Now seven thirty. This is the March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two work session of the Allen Dale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who's joining us. And the audience and on our Zoom webinar. At this time, I please ask the public to mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be one opportunity during this meeting for public comment, and we will advise you at the appropriate time. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meeting Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website. Published in the record within the first ten days of the new year and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. Please conduct the roll call.
Councilwoman Holman here.
Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole is absent. Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilwoman Wosinski.
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you, Michelle. Public comment. This is the first of three opportunities tonight for the public present to comment. Anyone from the public wishes to be heard? Not seeing anyone. I'll close the meeting to the public at this time. There'll be two more opportunities during the regular session. Administration Agenda Review. Tonight's regular session agenda includes the approval of the September ninth, two thousand and twenty-one work and regular session. Minutes. So if the council is going to approve them, Councilwoman Holman and Lova Solo will need to abstain. Ordinance twenty-two dash oh one, setting the two thousand and twenty-two salary ranges for our employees, and nine resolutions which have been listed on the consent agenda. Does anyone on the governing body have any questions about the agenda?
Nope.
Great. Not seeing anyone. So now that's the agenda. Why don't we go to council reports? Councilman O'Connell.
Thank you. I also have a Councilman O'Toole's report if you want to do them both.
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, for BPW, the DPW dealt with a couple of more snow and ice events over the past couple of weeks. Hopefully, we're done with that, Ron.
Saturday.
Yeah.
Under the leadership of Lake Operator Rich McDowell, the preparation of Crestwood Lake has begun. And weather permitting, the ball fields will be getting, starting to get scheduled for next week. Make them look nice and playable. Like I said, weather permitting. Councilman O'Toole's report for lone public safety. He met with Chief Bataro from AVAC. Regarding staffing the ambulance during the daytime, it's been an issue, ongoing issue. For as long as I can remember, probably with every ambulance during the day. And the fire department ladder nine forty-one is out of service due to an issue with the hydraulics. They're going to continue to work with fire chief to remedy this issue. They also have two new members and currently have thirty interior firefighters. Good news, Officer Azvedo is developing a lesson plan for high school students who are approaching driving age. This program will be delivered to our youth both by Allen Dale and Hohokas officers. And Kevin is also finalizing plans for this year's Junior Police Academy, which I believe applications are usually April first. Police Officer Di Pasquale is now certified to teach the Not Even Once Program, a class developed to educate high school students about opioid addiction. Two more vehicles were stolen and two more car theft attempts occurred in town during the week of March first. It is important to note that both attempts, when the, that in both attempts, when the criminals realized that the cars were locked, they moved on. Let's see, calls to headquarters as today were three thousand two hundred and ninety-seven. Fire calls were fifty-two and EMS calls were a hundred and sixty-five. That's all I have, Mayor.
Great. Thank you so much. Councilman Sasso?
Thank you. The Facilities, Parks and Recreation Committee met yesterday morning. As Councilman O'Connell mentioned, DPW is gearing up in Crestwood and the fields. You know, the day-to-day field things and the day-to-day other facilities issues, Mr. Kistner has, you know, a good cadence going, so it's not a really big deal. But we did discuss some of the other things in Crestwood upgrades and things like that. Excuse me, our, our registration portal capture point, we're going to do some upgrades there, software upgrades, which allows us to do some certain things to make registration easier and badge checking quicker and easier. We're also going to probably buy a couple of pieces of equipment, like two printers. And maybe one or two cameras and one or two hand scanners. The idea is that you can, first of all, everybody's got to take a new picture this year. You can do it yourself if you want. So you can either take a selfie and upload it, or you can have somebody else take it and upload it. But if you're not comfortable with that, you can still come to Borough Hall, or you will be able to come to Borough Hall or the lake, and they'll take your picture there. And then they can print out either here or there, right, correctly from wrong show. A nice new ID, which will be easier to scan. It'll be easier for the gate people to see your picture when it comes up and nice resolution. So we're looking to do that. And since the lake has, you know, for many, many years operated well into the black, you know, we felt like, you know, it may be a good idea to put some money back into, you know, our membership.
That's when we first had that system. It was about seven or eight years ago. So like, if they're like little kids who took it, they're going to look completely different.
My son, my son's ID card is ten years old.
Yeah. Or ten years.
He doesn't look anything like that picture.
I mean, the rest of us would look the same.
Of course we would.
Yeah, absolutely. The playground, which has been making tremendous progress, despite the fact that it's been winter, is due to open by Memorial Day. And it's looking good, and that will include a new gate, a new fence with a new gate, maybe working locations again a little bit. I'm talking about the concert series. We're gonna be great after all this two years of pandemic to get back there on the beach and listen to some free music. And I can't wait personally for that. I'm looking forward to that one. Going to Roto till the clay in the fields this year, which will make it look beautiful. That's pretty much the highlights. Did I miss any highlights, Amy?
No, just that we're going to have an ASA meeting soon.
Yes.
For all the sports people, because we haven't had that in a couple of years. So we kind of have to do that just to bring all the sports leaders together and just get an idea of what's going on.
Yeah, and there's some repairs to be done to some Belgium block curbs and stuff downtown and around. But again, Mr. Kistner's on that, so it's not worried about it. Yeah, unrelated to Parks Recs facilities, kind of on the land use side. Jim Wright, Cellar Farm Works Board emailed me today. He's saw evidence that the red shoulder hawk is returning and nesting on Maple Street again. Which, so he's very encouraged and reminded me that, and thanked me again, and thanked the council really again, for the voluntary ban on the rat poison bait traps, which he feels that maybe we're seeing some progress. The hawks are back and they're willing to come back and they look healthy and happy. So they are endangered, as you might know. So it would be great if they nest again in the same spot.
That's it. Great. Thank you so much. The Councilwoman Holman?
And he posted pictures of two bald-headed eagles.
Yes.
In the air. It's really cool. Not a big on social media, but that was cool. So from my report first, congratulations to Northern Highlands Regional High School Administration and School Board on a successful referendum this past Tuesday. I think the improvement plans at the high school will be beneficial to future students as well as all of our communities that came into Highland. So that was exciting. And then from my arena, thank you to Alyssa Mayer and Ron Kistner for working through the two thousand and twenty-two water budget. I think we're almost to a final version. And we, you know, had initially thought that the closing of the sale of the system could be as early as May of two thousand and twenty-two. But now I think, you know, just looking at the timing and pending DPU approval, the Board of Public Utilities approval, it looks like it could be late summer or even early fall. So we needed to make sure that the budget was accurate to keep our system running smoothly. So again, thanks, Alyssa and Ron. And our team, the Water Committee, has been meeting weekly and at smaller meetings multiple times a week to finalize the detail in the Allen Dale Purchase Agreement. And this has really been a collaborative process between Allen Dale and Suez. And our team truly has been tremendous. Suzanne has hopped on board. Thank you. And I certainly cannot thank Mike Breland, Ryan Skirbo, Ray Wiss, and Ron Kistner enough for working together with our elected team to really ensure that we do the best possible job for residents and for Suez, because they are taking over our water system. The main challenge that we still face as far as finalizing the purchase agreement is just ensuring that we provide options for the site of the PFOS treatment plant that we need in the New Street area. And so I just wanted to advise the council as well as any interested residents that we believe that we've come down to a few ABC options and that will be included in the purchase agreement. And those should be option A, that the permanent system be constructed in the DPW water garage or the garage area. So if you remember the building, that's across the street from our actual DPW building. Option B, and not saying that this is in the particular order of A comes before B, but option B, the permanent system would be constructed next to the existing water treatment plants. Option C, we've looked at is the permanent treatment would be constructed in the stockpile area on property that the borough currently owns. And, you know, obviously, we need to have an option D and just saying that we will mutually work if those options don't work out. And really, that's because we can't have DP NJDEP approval until final designs are given. So each of these options does require permits from the NJDEP. So sometimes that can, you know, can sort of derail a particular option, depending on how the NJDEP feels about that option. So I feel good that we're, you know, working through it and HRC will be presented at the DEP as, you know, for the permanent system. The temporary treatment will hopefully most likely be installed in that DPW water garage, which would be great. But that's the plan at this point. Suez has committed to moving forward with the temporary treatment as soon as the sale closes. Since this may not happen, as I said, till late summer, there is still the chance that Allen Dale will have a second or third quarter testing number that puts us over the PFOA or PFOS maximum contaminant limit. But right now, everybody can be assured that we are in compliance. We meet or exceed all of the NJDEP water quality measurements. So let's see what else. As I have shared at other public meetings, the West Crescent well is currently closed. We are looking right now with Suez as to how summer water demands can be met with Suez water and Allen Dale water. In the summertime, Allen Dale has always operated in phase one water restrictions. That means, you know, odd even houses water three days a week, and then we have a recharge day on the Monday. So there is a chance that Allen Dale residents may see additional restrictions this summer. And, you know, our team is going to try to ensure that we get ahead in communicating that out to residents if we feel that that's a reality. And certainly, I want to remind residents if they have any water concerns or questions to reach out to myself by email. And that is it, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Holman, Councilwoman Wosinski.
Sure.
Report.
Actually, I'd like to really thank Liz Holman and, you know, now Suzanne Lova Solo for all the work they've been doing on the water. Because I know, you know, we had the referendum and it was like, oh, my gosh, it's done. It's so not done. And I know how much you are all doing to make sure this is the best for the borough, make sure that everything's buttoned up as well as, of course, Ray and Ron and the whole rest of the team. So I know it's absolutely immense and I know it's very intense. So thank you, thank you, thank you all. We're all much better for it. And admin finance, we are still working on the budget. We had a meeting last week, so our numbers are shaping up. We're still getting some numbers in. So we're looking to introduce that in, in a couple of weeks. This last week, we had the eighth grade class here, which was really wonderful. Mr. Goodman brought all of his class in. Thank you for our Chief Dylan for popping in and also Officer Azvedo. We chit-chatted with the eighth graders. Some of them were really, really into it. Some of them were not into it at all. But it was kind of cool, young minds to, to try to talk to them about the council and service and government. And it was kind of fun.
My daughter said she had a good time.
Yeah. Oh, I didn't see your daughter. Oh, she didn't come up. That's so funny.
Intimate or not so intimate?
Well, it was funny because it like they came in, the girls were on one side, the boys are on the other side. And I actually did get a couple of people vying for me to try to pull, get some, pave their street. But I was like, don't talk to me.
Did say in the back, because she said, Dad, I don't want anyone to see your plaque and think that I'm your.
That you're related. Yeah, no, it was, it was super, super fun. Also, two twenty West Crescent, we are still working with the numbers. The numbers are coming in high. There is so much going on in the world right now, and it's just crazy. So I will be presenting a media, a presentation to the council at our next council meeting, closed session, to really discuss all of our options, because there's a lot of big, big decisions that we have to make. And that is it for me.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Lova Solo.
This is super fast. Because we meet the morning of land use board meetings. And so our next land use committee meeting will be next Wednesday morning. We have some things to discuss, some resident concerns as well as some borough things that we're considering. So, so that's about it. I'll be able to give you a full update at our next council meeting.
Great. Thank you. I'm going to give my report. Northern Highlands referendum, as Liz mentioned, on Tuesday, voters came to the polls to vote on Northern Highlands Board of Ed's public question requesting eight point eight million dollars for renovations and improvements to their facilities. And now they'll be unofficial totals from the machines and mail-in ballots received. As of Tuesday is six hundred and ninety-four yeses and three hundred and twenty-three noes. Upper Sutter River had similar margins to ours. It appears the proposal passed, but the Board of Elections is still counting the balance. For most up-to-date totals, you can visit www.burguncityclerk.org. Compost permits are on sale March fourteenth, the two thousand and twenty-two compost permits will go on sale Monday. Applications can be completed on our website. The compost facility will be open on Saturday, April second. I know that date is meaningful to a lot of people for that reason. Ron, thank you for all your work there. Daylight savings time. Don't forget to set your clocks ahead for daylight savings this Sunday. I, like everyone else, I'm sure, is looking forward to spring's arrival and getting outdoors and taking advantage of the increased daylight and nicer weather. Last week, I met with the third graders, which I think is the third or fourth, maybe the fourth year, I guess, since this is my fourth year as mayor, that I met with the third graders. One year, we did it via Zoom. A great group, energetic group. My thanks to Chief Dylan, to Assistant Captain Hillman from the Police Department, Assistant Matt Hillman from the Police, from the Fire Department. Captain Bataro and AVAC was here, DPW was here, and Patty Derser from the library was here. So we had a star-studded group. They were at least interested with me, which, which was fine. Thank you to everyone for showing up and for, for making their day a success. Lastly, I did want to take a brief moment. I have, we have been made aware about a lawsuit that has been filed on behalf of four Islanddale Police Officers, three sergeants and a patrolman. We were made aware of it from a media article yesterday. As of tonight, we have not been served with a copy of the complaint. The article on social media was factually inaccurate. The only characteristic, characterization of the process was offered by the officer's attorney, which was replete with inaccuracies. We stand behind the process and the outcome, and we support Chief Dylan and the Allen Dale Police Department. So at this time, that's all I'm going to say on that. Continuing. Ray Wiss, would you like to give your report?
Yeah, just very, very briefly, let's, since last two weeks, mostly working with Mr. Kistner on personnel, property maintenance and zoning issues. And if this were high school or college sports, I would say that the Water Committee is on double sessions, if not triple sessions. Yeah, I mean, we really are, for the first time, cautiously setting closure deadlines to having the agreement all linked up. And I think that that really is, as Councilman Holman said, on the horizon.
Great.
That's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Michelle, any report?
Sure. Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate that Tuesday's special election went very smoothly, thanks to Tatiana Markey, John Gill, Amanda Richards, Ron Kistner, Dan Richards, Rich McDowell, Ray Frazier, and Chief Dylan. Really does take a village to, to put it all together. And I also want to recognize Dave Flynn. I think he's an Allen Dale resident, and he is one of the poll workers. He went above and beyond. He stayed, you know, he, he has to stay here until we finish receiving the votes, but they, as all the poll workers do, but he stayed after the election ended to help us clean up and put tables away. So we really appreciated him doing that, and I just wanted to recognize him for that. And then we are ready to sell compost permits on Monday. This year's color is black to match the pet tags and the goose patrol vests.
Great.
That completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is Alyssa online? Okay, Ron, anything to report?
Just one thing on the report for public safety, nine four one ladder truck Campbell's coming up here on Monday to do that work. So without taking it down, that is, and that's a good thing. I do want to thank my DPW committee chair people, Councilwoman Holman. I don't really, what I do is when I need help, I request it, and I only requested yesterday.
Which is never almost.
I mean, they came last night, I mean, early, afternoon. I do appreciate the quick response. We had, I think, an excellent meeting. We covered a lot of things. Yeah, I don't like the, you guys all know my personality. I don't like looking, asking for help. I needed, all these came right away. I appreciate that.
It's great.
I want to give Councilwoman Lova Solo credit too. She's saying not having meetings, but, you know, Councilman Sasso, we had land use, was very active in it. Had a big shoes to fill. Even though we have our meetings, the stuff that Councilman was talking about, I contacted her, she puts it on the agenda, she talks to me about it. And it's nice to have the quick response and the support of the council members. So yeah. Know my job is to keep the things moving, but it's nice to have the support of everybody. So.
Right.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Chief Dylan?
I thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council for continued support of myself and my department. As Michelle said, it really does take a village and everybody in the town hall, every borough employee has been above and beyond insisting me in this transition. We're doing very well at the Police Department. We're making various equipment and safety upgrades and training as manpower allows. Quick work in progress, success story. Back in two thousand and sixteen, a vehicle was stolen on Meadow Lane. And I was, at the time, I was detective and I located a ski mask in the recovered vehicle, sent it for DNA, and the DNA came back this month. So not like it is on TV, but nonetheless. Still important to us. So that just shows the backlog with the State Police Lab, but nonetheless, still a success story for us, because the suspect that the DNA returned to had a murder charge before and after the Allen Dale incident. So it's important that, you know, we stay on top of that. My investigators, my officers are working that case as we speak. Putting on my OEM hat, I'm have to report the emergency operations plan for the borough was approved by the state of New Jersey on March third. As you know, this plan is basically a guide to emergency response in a borough encompassing virtually every aspect of local government. Every municipality in the state required perform a full review of the plan every three years. Thank you to everyone who assisted me with reviewing annexes, providing signatures and input on how we can improve the plan. I believe the data contained in the plan's latest version reflects the professional level of service we all provide to our community. Thank you. Great.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you so much. John, anything to report?
Newsletter is coming out over the weekend, so if there's any last-minute additions, we sometimes meet tonight, so we get them in. Besides that, I negotiate this, but Michelle, we have the special elections today, and she had that lock and roll, so all the compliments.
Great. Thank you so much, and thanks for all your work. Tyler, anything to report?
No report for me, status quo.
Okay, great. So it is seven fifty-five. I don't know if there's anything else that I can do.
Good.
At all. So I would request a motion to adjourn the work session.
Holman.
Thank you, Liz. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Amy. All in favor?
Hi.
Great. Everyone do what you need to do. We'll be back in five minutes. Tyler?
Ready to go.
Okay, eight o'clock. The time is now eight PM. Are we rolling?
Yes.
Okay, and this is the March tenth, two thousand and twenty-two regular session of the Allen Dale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everyone who is joining us tonight in person and those via Zoom webinar. At this time, I ask the public present to please mute your devices so as not to distract from the business of the meeting. There'll be two more opportunities for those present to speak during this meeting, and we will advise you at the appropriate times. Michelle, please read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
Sure. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year confirmed at the annual meeting are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website. Published in the record within the first ten days of the new year and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two sunshine notice was sent to the record, Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Great. If you could all please join in me and rise to salute the flag.
Let us, the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, please conduct the roll call.
Sure. Councilwoman Holman.
Here.
Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole is absent. Councilman Sasso.
Here.
Councilwoman Wosinski.
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein.
Here. Thank you, Michelle. I now open the floor to the public for public comment on agenda items only. And wish to be heard on agenda items. Not seeing anyone. Approval of minutes. I request a motion to approve the minutes of the September ninth, two thousand and twenty-one work session and September nine, two thousand and twenty-one regular session minutes. Thank you, Amy. Second.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. Michelle, please conduct a roll call. And a reminder, councilwomen Holman and Lova Solo must abstain.
Councilwoman Holman.
Abstain.
Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Abstain.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent. Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski.
Yes.
Great. Introduction of ordinances. I would request the council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading ordinance twenty dash oh one and set the hearing for March twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-two at eight PM or soon thereafter in the council chambers of the Allen Dale Municipal Building.
So moved, O'Connell.
Great. A second?
Second.
Thank you, Michelle. Please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call.
This is ordinance twenty-two oh one, an ordinance to amend chapter fifty-three of the Code of the Borough of Allen Dale. Officers and employees to fix the salaries, wages and compensation of the officers and employees of the Borough of Allen Dale for the year two thousand and twenty-two. Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent. Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski.
Yes.
Great. Thank you. On to the consent agenda, I would request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved, O'Connell.
Second.
Michelle, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Holman.
Yes.
Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole is absent. Councilman Sasso.
Yes.
And Councilwoman Wosinski.
Yes.
Great. Did you have a question?
Nope.
Okay. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Committee reports we have done. Staff reports we have done. Public comment, the end of the meeting. Anyone from the public wish to be heard? Want to come on up? Now would be the right time.
Oh, you're all decked out today.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Porres Poveri, nine sixty-three Franklin Turnpike.
It's great to see you.
Thank you. So it's nice to see you guys all again. So as you may remember, I'm here with my proposal for the peace polls. So I'm currently here to sort of discuss like an exact location. So that's sort of where I'm at right now, like with Mr. Sasso. So if you mind, can I? So if you mind, can I show you guys like a picture on my phone? It'll like show you where it is.
Okay.
So let me just pull that up. Can I come up?
Yes, yes.
Give me approach.
Thank you. So we're in Crestwood right now. And you know where the band shelf is?
Sure.
So like right around there, there's like, you drive in the custom, there's like the open air.
Yeah.
That's, um, trying to get like a picture of different things in the background. So you know, like you venture from there.
Yeah.
It's kind of like on the.
Okay. You're the bench. Okay. I don't know exactly, but I get the, I get the general idea. What's that?
Is that is the, if you're going in, the band shelf's here, lake is here, and this is a driveway that goes in. Joe, and the driveway goes here and then the swings are over here.
So basically.
To the right or the left of the.
And then going to this picture, that's the bench. So you're kind of in that little area, like in between the band shelf and the road.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. I mean, I think that's, that is a good area. Well, actually, sometimes when we have, um, when we have a lot of events there, there's people that park there and they park like all the way in. Um, so that's my concern now that I see that. How close is that to the road?
Relatively. I can't show you.
So like when we have a lot of events, what with the band shelf now, we don't let the people drive all the way in. So people park like along there and they actually use that area as a parking.
So right where Mr. Brandon is standing, that's where it is compared to the road, which is right there.
Was that you in the picture?
That's my only concern that, that it is used as that. Um, sure. Oh, yeah, I know. Yeah. No, I get it. I know exactly where it is.
Yeah.
I just, uh, I'm here as courses.
Sure.
Mentor.
Yeah. It's about 30 yards. Uh, if you're looking at the band shelf on the lakeside, it's about 30 yards to the left.
Mm-hmm.
And then where the, the, um, shuffleboard courts are, about another 30 yards.
Yeah. I mean, I think in that area where the shuffleboards courts are, is good. I just think if you do it too close to the road, you'll, because sometimes cars even like double park like in there. That's my only concern. Is the fence still there though? The, the fence comes around.
There's no, there's no rocks there either. There are some places where there are.
That's why cars park. That's why cars park there. So there's two other areas too, that, that may be a good idea. One is, um, when you pull into the grandstand to the right there by, um, Chuck Donback's tree.
We talked about that.
That area I thought would be.
My only concern with that was when we walked these the other day.
Okay.
Is the flooding that's there. There's, there's still a lot of flooding.
By where, Amy? By Chuck Donback's tree. Across. By the grandstand. Because that was what I said. I'm like, I hadn't really thought you're, you're right, but because it would be, I, I just was like, oh, there's so much nice traffic that comes in. But, right. And Fourth of July, you'd get a lot of, it would, it would be seen by a lot of people. I mean, there's also that island when you go into Crestwood Lake. There's that island there, that kind of new one we put in about six years ago.
Isn't there, uh, American flag?
There's a flag pole there. Yeah.
So.
But also that's a cheap parenthesis memorial.
This is helpful. If we, Ron, if you could coordinate a time or if you can coordinate a time with Ron as to approximately where, where you want it to be. And then you could hearing and understanding the concerns, you could help them focus if maybe, you know, one direction or another.
Yeah, we've been, we've been kind of chit chatting about this.
Even from that area, you know.
Most proximate to where you would like it that works for me.
Yeah, right.
We just have to think of all the events in town. That's why I like the island. When you said that, like, it sounded good at first, but then I'm like, oh my gosh, we do have events that people put tents there. So you don't want it to get ruined or, um, you know, so that's, that's.
And Councilwoman Holman actually had a very good thought. We talked about it, just the two of us, that this is going to inspire thought, I think you said, and feelings. So you want it to be in a place that's undistracted, you know? So you don't want a bunch of, you don't want to have to sit there and you want to think about peace and unity in the world without smelling somebody's exhaust, you know? So I'm sure we can come up with a good spot.
But we love the idea.
And I'll take a field trip down with you. I'm sure Councilwoman Wazinski could do it too. Um, we'll take a quick trip down there, 10, 15 minutes walk around. It's hard for me to picture exactly. I certainly know the area. I walk it all the time. But, uh, we should, we should go down there. Yeah, but you know what? I can walk down there.
I like the old fashioned way.
I need to see it. I need to, I need to be there. So, um, Pete, I'll meet Pete. We can all go together. We can go separately, whatever work. I'm pretty, I'm working at home now, so I'm pretty flexible. So you just can be called as well. So, yeah. So, you know, I can be down there and sometimes on 15 minutes notice, I can get you down.
And when were you planning again on installing the, uh, memorial?
June, you wanted in, right?
So I'm thinking maybe a little before June, maybe like May, maybe. Okay. Because I have a, uh, some prayers. So I'm doing, so that like, so a little before that.
Okay.
We got a full time line done.
Okay.
Later, um, next week maybe, because I have my, I have to be the Saturday and I have to stay.
Okay. Well, I can meet you down there as early as tomorrow. So it's a few. Just let me know. Okay.
Great. Thank you.
Cool. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with the SAT. Yeah, exactly.
Thank you. Not seeing anyone else from the public, um, assuming no one else from the public. Um, I would now, we're at the end, request a motion to adjourn the regular session. Thank you, Steve. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you very much, everyone.